United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the minutes of prior council meeting of April 27th and the work session of May the 11th. Any corrections or comments on this?
No, sir.
Hearing none, minutes stand approved. At this time, we have a presentation of a special persons contest that Green Hills Police Department sponsored. And Chief, do you want to?
I would. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We thank all of you, students and staff and parents and other special persons from Primary North. I'd especially like to thank Ms. Katie Labmeyer, who represents the staff of the school, and she's done a lot of work in putting together what we hoped would be a good moment or a good night for all of you that are here tonight. It's been a very long pandemic. We've missed being in touch with our community, so we're very happy that we were able to do this contest. And each of you is here because you were chosen of your great artwork, of your special person, so we hope that you and your special person are here tonight. And here's what we have in store for you. You will be coming up, you will be called by each member of council and our municipal manager. We ask that you just come up right through here, and you will come to the person who has called your name. They will have a certificate for you. They will also have a gift certificate from McDonald's for you, and your special person will have a very special gift as well. We also have some coloring books and activity, things that we put together from the police department. So we're very proud that the school has selected you. We're very happy to honor you tonight. So I'm going to ask that councilperson Melanie Hermes starts, and then we will go around the room, and each of you will have your name called by the manager or a member of council. I would also like to thank from our school board, Dr. John Coupoletti, who is standing in the back of the room. He is a member of the Wynton Woods Board of Education, and we're very honored that he took his time to come and share this great moment with all of you, your students and your special persons. So, Mrs. Hermes, if you would, please.
Sure. I also want to thank Principal Stiles, who's also here. So, thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
My certificate goes to Miss Man's student, Ruby Wuez Escavell, and I want to say she's also a classmate of my daughter, Michaela Hermes, so I'm very honored to give this to her.
And if your special person is here, please join your student as well. Well, she's got something for you. She's going to have a lot to carry. You can go right on over to Ms. Hermes.
Hi. Hi, Ruby.
Hi.
I'm Michaela's mom. She talks about certain things about you.
That's for your special person.
Oh, yeah, sorry. This is for you. This is for your special person, and there's another good one as well. Congratulations.
This certificate goes to Emily Galen or Gallen?
Galen?
Emily?
Emily?
Is there somebody they can give?
Is Emily? Okay.
Can I present this to one of you to...
I guess.
I can put everything in this bag.
Because these things aren't going home with us.
Oh, and I did black things tell you. As you and your special person leave, please come back up. Over here, we have some very special treats. We've got cupcakes with the Wynton Woods logo on it, and we've also got cookies. We've got a couple variety of cookies, and we've got paper plates and napkins, so please, before you leave, help yourself. And this is from our newest bakery in town that is in the shopping center. Please help each other.
Those are also not going home with us.
Well.
This certificate is for Braylon McEvoy.
Brandon?
Braylon?
Sorry, we're giving you all the special.
Okay. I have a certificate for Aiden Faruda. Did I say that right? Aiden? Aiden? Okay.
Oh, there's...
Let's see. Sweetheart. Okay. How about I put this in the bag for you, okay? Yeah. This is for your special person. Congratulations.
Mayor.
I have one for, I think it's Parkier Davis.
Show them the picture, bud.
Oh, let's see.
Where's your certificate?
Nice.
Don't lose your McDonald's. That's for you. Good job. Ms. Wald.
Davidson Daniel Sanchez. Daniel, tú me entiendes, ¿verdad? Que te hable español, tú me entiendes. Oye, me, tanto vales, tanto tú sabes, tanto vales. Y todo lo que tú tengas aquí en el cerebro, nadie te lo puede quitar. Así que recuerda este momento porque es el primero del precio de tu vida, okay? Aquí tengo un certificado de McDonald's para tener una comidita o algo. Aquí tengo una bolsa con juguetes y lápiz de colorear y todo eso, y para usted, señora, que es la que está al frente de todo.
Hey, Jack, you can just say what she said.
Now you go.
Yeah, we have to follow that. Tomorrow, Cook. Is tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Ten. Oh, okay. Chief.
Yes, sir. Come on.
Thank you. Good job.
Last but not least, Kevin Roundtree.
Oh, I got to see too. Let's see. Nice, I love it. Okay, there's your certificate. There's your kitty bag, McDonald's is in there. And there you go. You're welcome. Great job.
Ms. Stiles, we thank you and your staff for all that you did to help us put this together. We thank you, boys and girls, for drawing such beautiful pictures, and thank you, special persons, for being so special. And please, please, you may leave any time that you wish. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting, but please take some cupcakes and cookies before you leave. Dr. Coupoletti.
Would it be possible for the principal, the teacher, the students to...
Mr. Mayor, is that all right with you?
Sure.
The mayor says it's okay.
Going to make it easier for them to grab the cookies and the cupcakes.
And the cupcakes, yeah.
Everybody that was honored tonight and their special persons, if you could come forward.
We're probably going to have to stand. I don't know if they can. We're probably going to have to stand. I don't think it sees us. Can you get everybody in this one? You might have to do a landscape photo.
Ready? Smile. It's hard, huh?
This is a lot.
Ready? We should be good. Don't forget the treats on the way out.
Oh, no. He wore the...
Cookies.
We loved his face. Exactly. We didn't see that.
Of course, she pokes a balloon.
Thank you, guys, so much. That just makes my day. It was so exciting. It's so cute.
And it won't be long before Lucy will be up here.
I know. Maybe that's why. I can picture my daughter up there.
I know. Tony.
Tony.
She's in a minute. Pass that little girl. She wants some.
Chief?
There's plenty. Come get some.
Oh, yes, help yourself.
Chief, are you putting their vouchers on your website, your website?
Oh, we sure can, yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
I only got to see a couple of them, so.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Well, they're artwork. That's what they're talking about, is their artwork.
Oh, I, yeah, I don't have that.
Oh, that's okay.
The school can.
And I guess you...
I'll see if the school can. Ms. Stiles, would it be possible to take just pictures of the artwork? Do you still have that or do you...
Well, sorry.
All right.
I can ask them to take pictures of this.
Well, they're at school.
You just have to make it clear that they're giving, you have to make it clear you're giving, they're giving permission to put it on the website, so.
Yeah.
So if it's too tricky, don't worry about it.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Are you sure you can fit more on there? Thanks, guys. Bye. We should have given them to-go boxes so they could each take a box of cupcakes.
Yeah, really.
Oh, that's so sweet.
Oh, I did want to mention to council that this was the brainchild of our police clerk, Bonda Sequoi, who came up with the idea. We ran it by Primary North, and they were enthusiastic partners. And then lastly, our sponsors, Krogers and McDonald's donated all of the gifts, so that was very, very nice of them.
Is this going to be an annual thing or...
We might come up with something better next year.
Okay, moving on. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to three minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers.
What's today's date?
The 25th.
Since we're bearing gifts tonight, I thought I would bring a gift to council. My name's Pat Andwan. I live at 32 Chalmers Lane. And this bag of trash is courtesy of the residents from Chalmers Court in Chalmers Lane. I don't know which one of you people is supposed to be in charge of streets and services, but I would say you're not doing a very good job. There has been so much litter. Supposedly, I don't know why the police are paying attention to this. If you're being paid $2,000 a year to pay attention to things, how frequently do you really take a look? And Mrs. Metz, may I mention that you spoke falsehood on a local blog claiming that I had met with somebody. It's not even yourself, so you have no right to declare that I've met with anyone. You got that straight?
I was in the room when you were actually speaking with her.
Okay. You claimed that I met with a person on Chalmers Lane. That did not happen. I merely said I would like to arrange a meeting, so let's get that straight, and no more lies from you or your husband. So, what can we expect in the way of future supervision for trash? I saw this little courtesy letter that went out to a number of residents on Chalmers Lane, supposedly that they would come to code with their garbage concealment. But Ms. Kovak, the letter you sent me that went to David Eifert, was addressed for its property at 3 Chalmers Lane. And of course, you are well aware that I have a complaint about the noncompliance of 30 Chalmers Lane, not complying with the appropriate screen, and today it still does it because we failed to notify Mr. Eifert to take attention to that. I noticed it on the other property owners' tab. But why something as simple as a letter about a garbage screen is still beyond your grasp? I've got a lot of people recently, when I was taking up petition signatures, thrown for council, that cannot begin to tolerate what you represent. And I'm not talking just about you. I'm talking about you and everyone here. You are failures. You are disgraced in this community, and giving out cookies and cupcakes isn't going to make you popular. Run for reelection again and again on a code. You don't want to have to involve your time with them.
Okay, thank you. Any others?
Not at this point.
All right, moving on. You know, it's what manager, Yvonne Kovak?
Speaking, Mayor, I have a number of things I want to go through. First of all, I want to respond to some of the questions that were raised at the previous meeting. Ms. Andwan actually had requested some information, asked that additional light be shed on two references at previous meetings that were made, one regarding an imminent lawsuit and one reference to pending litigation. She also asked why there is no public notice of lawsuits filed against the village. Actually, those references pertain to a lawsuit the village filed against a property owner for failure to address violations at their property, so her assumption was not accurate. To be completely transparent about recent court activities, I want to inform the public that six village officials, the mayor, me, the police chief, the service foreman, two police officers, were subpoenaed by Ms. Andwan to provide testimony in a civil lawsuit that she filed against a neighbor. We are not sure the details of the case.
You're out of order. You're out of order.
We are not sure of the details of the case because she did not respond to my request for information as to what this case is all about. But after 12 hours over two days, representing a total of 72 staff hours, only one staff member was actually called to testify. Total cost to the village for this downtime, in addition to our downtime when we couldn't do other work, is about $4,320. So, everything I just told you is now a matter of public record.
If you, Ms. Andwan, if you speak out one more time, I'm advising you, you'll be removed from the council meeting.
Oh, yes. Indeed.
Okay, so everything I just told you is a matter of public record. The village is under no obligation to report court cases in which they are involved, for any case, public or private. The documents once filed become public records and can be viewed on the Hamilton County Court website. At the last meeting, both Pat Andwan and Pat Bender asked about a line in the minutes pertaining to a comment Mr. Forbes had made, and I believe is our council retreat, regarding council members listening to comments and then conveying information to the manager. Taken by itself, that line can be kind of confusing, so I'd like to read the entire paragraph from which that was taken. It is entitled "Taking Complaints From Citizens." When individual council members receive citizen complaints, these should be referred to the administration staff for investigation and resolution immediately. A vast majority of complaints concern enforcement issues which must ultimately be addressed by the staff anyway. Personal council involvement in enforcement or interpretation of ordinance, policies, or laws could subject the council to later problems. The administrative staff enforces zoning, ordinances, basic services, personnel matters, et cetera, and through the separation of duties, the village council establishes the rules by which the staff functions. So hopefully they'll clarify that a little bit. Ms. Andwan asked why she did not receive a survey regarding a local historic district. I did look back. The survey was not mailed, as I had indicated, but it was distributed at the end of a group meeting that was held on January 21st of 2020. If you missed that opportunity, I don't even recall if you read that meeting. Hopefully you took advantage of the recent online survey that we had on the same topic. I also wanted to say in closing that Ms. Andwan accused me of not responding to public record requests, causing her to have to subpoena the records. For the record, Ms. Andwan subpoenaed records for her case on March 4th. The records were provided on March 9th. She emailed another similar request on April 19th, and I responded on May 3rd. So the subpoena came first, not the other way around. I know she feels it was incomplete. There are records, as I had indicated to her, of they've either been disposed of or they don't exist, so just because she didn't get what she wants doesn't mean it wasn't a complete response to the record request. A final question came from Helen Booker about the status of the roundabout that was proposed for the corner of Hadley and Farragut. That, as you will recall, is a project that we had put on hold because of COVID, not knowing where our finances were going to go. So that, those were the questions that we had. I want to also address another topic that has really become big on Facebook, so big, and that's the batting cage. I did inform Sister Werf, I think the last time we met, we had had discussions with the GWSA. They did send a letter, I want to read that letter, that we have read, that we have received. I'm writing this letter to inform the Green Hills community that the Green Hills Wynton Athletic Association is in the process of dissolving. This has been a result of a lack of newness, stray involvement within the community. I have been informed that the batting cage that used to reside at the old tennis court by the swimming pool was donated to GWSA prior to my involvement by the Sterwerf family. This tool has benefited the youth of GWSA for many years, and we thank them. Since the batting cage is no longer in use, I would like to return it to the Sterwerf family so they may do with it as they see fit. Thank you, Mr. Gary Otten of GWSA. So at this point in time, I believe they have found a new home for the batting cage, and that's rare. We mentioned, oh, swimming pool opens this weekend. It's so hard to believe, but it's also so wonderful, isn't it, after the year we put in last year? Memberships are picking up, especially with word that we're not going to be starting, won't have to start with restrictions, so we're looking forward to a great year at the swimming pool. Memorial Day, we're also planning something. I believe Ms. Metz will go through it a little bit. We also have flyers for you. We're, Chief and I are also working on dates for some park talks later this summer. We're looking forward to that. Couple of items that we've talked about previously regarding like council's agenda and Facebook. I am in the process of collecting data for us to discuss a future work session. We are getting a lot of information on each. You know, I'm just going to take this time to say a little comment, though, about the Facebook. I know there's a lot of people out there who always wonder, why does the village have Facebook? And again, this weekend was just one example of why the village doesn't have Facebook. I mean, if we want that to be the face of Green Hills, that's pathetic, and I think everybody seated up here has far more interest in the well-being of this community in mind than to put something like that on Facebook. So that's all you have to say.
That it?
For now.
Law Director, Mr. Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything additional to report, other than the written report that was included in the document.
All right, Clerk of Council, Tanya Kohler.
How's it going, work?
All right. Chief of Police, can you affirm that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a very successful drug takeback day back on April 24th. It was a hit. We had 50 pounds of unneeded or expired prescription pills that were turned in to our office, so those were transported to the DEA for incineration. We do encourage residents who may still have unwanted or expired pills to bring them up anytime in our lobby during regular business hours from 7:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., and we'll make sure that those get in our drug box for destruction. We did receive our 2021 accreditation certificate, and that is our law enforcement accreditation, which was effective on March 26th. It's our fifth accreditation. This award remains in effect for four years, and so we're very pleased that the commission granted that reaccreditation to us. Our new inoperable vehicle ordinance will go into effect in three days, on May 28th. We publicize this to our citizens as best as possible. It's also on our webpage, and we're hoping that that does address some of our parking issues here in Green Hills, as these are calls that we answer on a regular and daily basis. Sometimes it's the little things that matter. On April 27th, Officer Carl Holbrook was working. He received a call from a citizen to ask about lawn care services in the area. She told us that she was staying at a residence in the J section with her granddaughter who had just had surgery and was unable to mow her lawn. She requested contact information for some inexpensive lawn care companies. The officer did some research, as time permitted, and he called her back. He was able to find a couple of highly rated lawn care companies that service Green Hills and provided her with names and contact information. I thought that was somewhat above and beyond the call of duty. I wrote to him that you clearly could have classified this as not a police matter, but instead you went above and beyond to help this temporary resident who did not know where to turn for help. It is this kind of relationship we want to continue to build in our community, and my bet is that this resident and her granddaughter will not forget your kindness and willingness to help. Please keep up the good work. During the month of April, our department made five criminal arrests, including arrests for criminal trespass, obstructing official business, theft, and violation of a protection order. We responded to 158 incidents, including 27 squad runs, 11 trouble runs, eight warrants served, seven domestic trouble runs, seven parking complaints, five noise complaints, five check on wellbeings, five intrusion alarms, and five lockouts. We provided mutual aid in 10 instances. We issued 33 traffic citations, 35 warning citations, and investigated four traffic crashes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions of the Chief? You did a good job putting everything together tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Law Director, Mr. Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything additional to report other than the written report that was included.
All right, Clerk of Council, Tanya Kohler. All right, Chief of Police, Neil Furman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a very successful drug takeback day back on April 24th. It was a hit. We had 50 pounds of unneeded or expired prescription pills that were turned in to our office. So those were transported to the DEA for incineration. We do encourage residents who may still have unwanted or expired pills to bring them up anytime in our lobby during regular business hours from 7:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. And we'll make sure that those get in our drug box for destruction. We did receive our 2021 accreditation certificate, and that is our law enforcement accreditation, which was effective on March 26th. It's our fifth accreditation. This award remains in effect for four years, and so we're very pleased that the commission granted that reaccreditation to us. Our new inoperable vehicle ordinance will go into effect in three days, on May 28th. We publicize this to our citizens as best as possible. It's also on our webpage, and we're hoping that that does address some of our parking issues here in Green Hills. These are calls that we answer on a regular and daily basis. Sometimes, it's the little things that matter. On April 27th, Officer Carl Holbrook was working. He received a call from a citizen to ask about lawn care services in the area. She told us that she was staying at a residence in the J section with her granddaughter who had just had surgery and was unable to mow her lawn. She requested contact information for some inexpensive lawn care companies. The officer did some research, as time permitted, and he called her back. He was able to find a couple of highly rated lawn care companies that service Green Hills and provided her with the names and contact information. I thought that was somewhat above and beyond the call of duty. I wrote to him that you clearly could have classified this as not a police matter, but instead, you went above and beyond to help this temporary resident who did not know where to turn for help. It is this kind of relationship we want to continue to build in our community. And my bet is that this resident and her granddaughter will not forget your kindness and willingness to help. Please keep up the good work. During the month of April, our department made five criminal arrests, including arrests for criminal trespass, obstructing official business, theft, and violation of a protection order. We responded to 158 incidents, including 27 squad runs, 11 trouble runs, eight warrants served, seven domestic trouble runs, seven parking complaints, five noise complaints, five check-on wellbeings, five intrusion alarms, and five lockouts. We provided mutual aid in 10 instances. We issued 33 traffic citations, 35 warning citations, and investigated four traffic crashes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions of the Chief? You did a good job putting everything together tonight.
Thank you, sir.
All right, the only thing I have are the court receipts for the month of April. The ending bank balance is $15,678.42. Checks to be issued to the state of Ohio is $2,054.69, $72 to Hamilton County, and $7,396.79 to the Village of Green Hills. Committee reports, Service and Streets, Jennifer Osmondoglu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have the next two phases of the sidewalk concrete cutting program that will start soon. Do we have a definite date of arrival?
October 29th, but we're waiting for it.
Okay.
Up to get sent in.
Great. So it should be... I'll announce to you the streets that will be repaired. Adele Walk, Burley Circle, Bayham Drive, Bedford Drive, Briarwood Lane, Brockton Lane, Bachman Street, Ingram Road, Farrogate Road, Falcon Lane, Flanders Lane, Foxworth Lane, Gambier Circle, Jennings Road, Joponica Drive, and Hamlet Drive. So that'll be nice to have those sidewalks fixed. I live on one of the streets that has been repaired, and it really makes a difference. So we're excited about that.
Nice.
We do have a Streets and Services meeting scheduled for June 2nd at 3:00. If there's anything that you would like discussed at the meeting, you're welcome to get on the Village of Green Hills website, and my email address is on here, and you can send it to me. I don't have... You know, I don't really care to be on Facebook monitoring all the complaints on there about things. So if you would like something officially discussed, you're welcome to send an email. I like to do things on the open.
Yeah, okay.
And I... Thank you for saying that. It reminded me, because I did want to let you... I think I let you guys know, but to let the public know that our website emails, they are not functioning right now. I took down one.
I know.
But yeah.
Well, the website links aren't available, but you can always email any of us.
Directly.
Yeah, first initial, last name, at greenhillsohio.org. So that goes straight through instead of using the form on the website, which is currently down.
Right.
Up being worked, though.
Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Community Development, Jeff Holter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. 5/21, we met. Community Development had met. And we... One of the things that we're implementing is a beautification award. There'll be more details coming soon about that to encourage people to keep up their properties and give a pat on the back to those that do a great job of it, which there's quite a few. The other thing I'd like to publicly acknowledge is Christine Visniche's letter in the last... The previous journal in May, titled "Blessings Abound in Green Hills." It came from me at a very good time. This is a long haul. Doing this job is... I take it seriously, as all of us do. And, you know, it's hard. You have to sit here and listen to things that are quite derogatory and very disrespectful, just from a personal standpoint. And there's this big cloud that's cast across all of council. That's on par with any kind of prejudice, in my opinion. I know... Look, it kind of cringe when I hear the... Either people or comedians talk about, "Oh, the politicians." And, you know, someone said, "You're a politician." I'm like, "I never thought of myself as a politician, but I guess I fit that, be sitting up in this seat." We're residents. We're people. We want to do what's right by everyone, as much as we can. So at a time where I'm going, "Wait a minute." I even said to my wife, "Maybe I'm done." And she says, "You have a commitment." And I knew I really wasn't done, but I think I just felt worn down. And to hear the refreshing words from Christine Visniche in this article made a huge difference. I'd like to encourage our community not to pat us on the back, but to keep in mind, yes, there's things that we could do better. We want to know what those are. We want to do better. I mean, any way we possibly can. I think that's a very sincere desire. But also, you know, just think of the good side of the community. Doesn't mean you dismiss things that need to be improved, but to not acknowledge... And I know there are certain individuals... I've never heard a positive comment about anyone or anything. And it's more than one. I just don't think that's true. I don't think it's that black and white. So thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Great Safety, Melanie Hermes.
Our next meeting is before the next council meeting, on June 22nd at 5:30. Nothing else to discuss except for a great job to the police department for the outreach this evening. It was a great event. Thank you.
All right, Recreation Cable Television, Natasha Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a meeting on May 21st to discuss recreation events and items coming up. Yes, thank you for mentioning the pool opens on 5/29. You can sign up for swim lessons as well as fill out a membership application online. So go ahead and go over and do that. We are having a Memorial Day event on the Commons following the American Legion ceremony. We do have flyers that I was able to distribute to a few people. We've also sent out the village headlines for it, information on the website. Did you put this up on the website? Okay. So this is up on the website. The American Legion will be having their ceremony starting at 11:00. And then at 11:30 to 12:30, we're going to have a food truck, a station to write letters to the soldiers currently serving that we can send overseas. You're also welcome to bring a card for the troops, but if you do bring it, they... The company that we're submitting them through, do ask that you leave it unsealed so that they can do whatever they do for certain reading and proofreading, inspecting, all of that jazz. So that's going on on Monday, May 31st. Again, please come, starting at 11:00 for the American Legion ceremony and then stay for the following event for ours. And also, Harvest Fest is still a go on October 2nd. It's going to be a shortened event, so it will be from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. rather than all day. So please come out. There'll be some vendors. We'll do food trucks, some fun activities we'll have going on there, music going as well. And then finally, we do have some other plans that are in the works, but please, please, please email me with suggestions. I'm completely open to any ideas, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Inter-Governmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Mary Walther.
I just want to let you know that we have a meeting coming on the 22nd of June, and it's meeting at 6:00.
Finance and Audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee will be meeting on June 2nd at 2:00, prior to Streets and Services. That meeting, we will be discussing the 2022 tax review. The finance director is spending the better part of the month pulling the whole together, the processes that the committee reviews and reviews it, makes any recommendations, and submits it to council. We'll have that for you all on the council work session with the intent to pass that tax statement for presentation to the county in July as required. So that is what will be going on at that particular meeting. At your place tonight is the general fund recap that was sent out by the finance director. As you can see, the general fund income tax and real estate tax receipts are in a positive direction. The current general fund balance is up this year over last year at the end of April. Current balance is $1,413,423, which is an increase of $223,526 over 2020. As I've mentioned previously, we will see some weird numbers the next two months when you're looking at the year-to-year comparison. Because as you remember, May and June receipts last year were pretty weird. So that would be something to keep an eye out on. Expenditures are right on target, both in percentage appropriation as well as actual dollar amount. Transfers are as they were at the beginning of the year, so we're right where we need to be. That it. Unless you have any other questions. That's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, unfinished business? We have none. New business, Resolution Number 2021-08-CD, affirming the creation of a part-time code enforcement position and establishing a salary for said person. Mr. Holter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have Resolution Number 2021-08-CD, affirming the creation of a part-time code enforcement position and establishing a salary for said position. Whereas Section 2.05D of the village charter provides that council shall have the power to establish a number of employees and officers in various offices, departments, divisions, bureaus, boards, and commissions of the municipality, and to fix the rate of their compensation, hours of work, and to provide such fringe benefits as may be deemed proper by the council. And whereas council has determined that there is a need to establish the position of a part-time code enforcement officer, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, members elected there unto concurring, Section 1, that the council of the Village of Green Hills hereby affirms the creation of the position of part-time code enforcement officer who shall report to and be under the supervision of the municipal manager. Section 2, that the base rate of pay for the part-time position of code enforcement officer shall be $14,400 annually to be paid bi-weekly. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect immediately on its adoption.
I object. You should not be hiring people who are not...
Okay. Ms. Andwan, Ms. Andwan, I ask you not to disturb the meeting. Will you please leave?
I object. I intend to leave this...
No, it's a resolution.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
I am looking forward to having a code enforcement officer, and I look forward to cooperatively working with him.
Yep, agreed.
Okay. Been moved? Has it been seconded yet?
Seconded.
All right, clerk, poll the council members.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Hermes.
Aye.
Ms. Metz.
Aye.
Ms. Walther.
Aye.
Ms. Osmondoglu.
Aye.
And Mr. Holton.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number 2021-08-CD passes. All right, moving on. Resolution Number 2021... Did I say that passed? Yes.
Yes, you did.
All right. Resolution 2021-09-RECK, authorizing municipal manager to apply for a nature works grant. Ms. Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 2021-09-RECK, authorizing the municipal manager to apply for a nature works grant. Whereas the state of Ohio, through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, administers financial assistance for public recreation purposes through the state of Ohio Nature Works Grant Program. And whereas the Village of Green Hills desires financial assistance under the Nature Works Grant Program, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, state of Ohio, that Section 1, the council of the Village of Green Hills approves filing this application for financial assistance. Section 2, the municipal manager is hereby authorized and directed to execute and file an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and to provide all information and documentation required to become eligible for possible funding assistance. Section 3, the council of the Village of Green Hills does agree to obligate the funds required to satisfactorily complete the proposed project and become eligible for reimbursement under the terms of the Nature Works Grant Program. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect immediately upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I'm moved for the adoption of this resolution.
Second. Any comments or questions? Do you want to say anything?
Just working really hard on this to get done in time.
And the purpose of this is to complete the funding for the park.
Correct.
All right.
Complete starts.
Well, we go... It'll go pretty far. A combination with some other council we already have.
Add to.
Add to.
Add to.
Thank you.
Well, that's what I... Complete the funding.
Clerk Haller, roll.
Did somebody second it?
I did. Yeah.
Ms. Osmondoglu.
Aye.
Ms. Walther.
Aye.
Mr. Holton.
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Metz.
Aye.
Ms. Hermes.
Aye.
Resolution Number 2021-09-RECK passes. Next resolution is Number 2021-10-SNS, authorizing the municipal manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Transit Infrastructure Fund Program and to execute contracts as required. Ms. Osmondoglu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 2021-10-SNS, a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Transit Infrastructure Fund Program and to execute contracts as required. Whereas the Transit Infrastructure Fund Program provides funding for the general construction or maintenance of roads or bridges and related facilities involved in the provision of service by the Regional Transit Authority. And whereas the Village of Green Hills is planning to make capital improvements to the Enfield Street Public Park and Ride Lot. And whereas the infrastructure improvement herein described is considered to be a priority need for the community and is a qualified project under the Transit Infrastructure Fund, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, state of Ohio,
that Section 1, the municipal manager is hereby authorized to apply to the transit authority for funds as described above. Section 2, the municipal manager is authorized to enter into any agreements with the transit authority as may be necessary and appropriate for obtaining this financial assistance. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect immediately upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Do you want to go into the purpose?
Yeah, again, for the parking lot, and we're going to try to get that paid, and the Kev will do in due time. Perfect. Our first priority is the lot.
Okay. Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Hurnes?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Osmondoglu?
Aye.
Mr. Holton?
Aye.
Ms. Walder?
Aye.
And Mr. Lee?
Aye. Resolution Number 2021-10-SNS passes. Next resolution, Number 2021-11-F, resolution requesting information from the Hamilton County Auditor for purpose of evaluating and levying a tax exceeding the 10 mil limitation. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2021-11-F, resolution requesting information from the Hamilton County Auditor for purposes of evaluating and levying a tax in exceeding the 10 mil limitation. Whereas the village council has preliminarily determined that the amount of taxes which may be raised within the 10 mil limitation will be insufficient to fund necessary services provided by the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio. And whereas the primary purpose and intent of such funding is for the current operating expenses for the village as authorized by Section 5705.19A of the Ohio Revised Code. And whereas Ohio Revised Code 5705.03 requires the village council to obtain certain information from the county auditor prior to proceeding with the submission of a tax levy to the electors of the village. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village Green Hills, Hamilton, Ohio. Section 1, that the village council has preliminarily determined that it is necessary to levy a tax in the excess of the 10 mil limitation for the benefit of the residents of Green Hills for current operating expenses for the village as authorized by Ohio Revised Code 5705.19A. Section 2, that the levy to be placed upon the tax list is a renewal levy. Section 3, that the village council hereby request information from the county auditor related to the current tax total valuation of the village and the dollar amount of the revenue that would be generated by a tax, by a levy of tax at a rate not exceeding 3.28 mils for each $1 valuation for five years. Section 4, that the village council seeks the information requested to present the levy on the November 2nd, 2021 ballot. Section 5, that the clerk of the village council is hereby directed to immediately certify county auditor with this resolution, and to obtain from the county auditor the information requested hereafter. Mr. Mayor, I move the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments?
Just as a point of clarification, this is not an increase. This is a renewal of the existing amount. This renewal levy generates approximately $60,000 annually, and currently costs $33.31 for every $100,000 of valuation. So again, it is a five-year renewal, something that's already on the books, and there is no increase in taxes.
Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Walder?
Aye.
Mr. Holton?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Hurnes?
Aye.
Ms. Osmondoglu?
Aye.
Resolution Number 2021-F11-F passes. The calendar?
June 2nd, Finance Committee, 2:00.
May 31st Memorial Day event.
Yep. May 29th, pool opens. May 31st Memorial Day event. Thank you.
June 2nd, 3:00, Streets and Services.
June 22nd, safety at 5:30, and laws and rules at 6:00 of June 22nd as well. And please come out for our concerts on the common every other Wednesday. Not this week, but...
The next, it'll be June 2nd will be the next one, and that's Jim Miller Day, honoring Mr. Miller for doing this for 24 years. And he has put on, or arranged in those 24 years, 276 concerts.
Wow. That's awesome.
But he's already used that as a piece of trivia.
And actually, somebody guessed 275, so they got a $10 coupon to Skyline.
And then look for information on the beautification award that's coming up, and potentially in the future, we'll do another. Thanks for the reminder of bringing in the litter from Chalmers, that helped. We'll put that on the books in the fall.
I will comment on that, that I have told the Service Department to clean up Chalmers Court and Chalmers Lane every Friday. That's litter, that's garbage cans, whatever they see in the driveway. Whatever they see in the driveway.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.